So let's, let's begin. Welcome everyone to the February 18th. Meeting of the Police Reform and Reinvention Collaborative Committee. Today on this Thursday, February 18th, we plan on first addressing anything that knew that might have come up. But the substance of this meeting, I expect to revolve around our past community engagement or public hearing, where we had a decent showing of people who had some suggestions or comments and ideas. So before I jump into that, does anybody want to share anything before we start on the agenda from the last public hearing? All right, seeing no one raising their hand. So there was a lot of material that people addressed and one of the things, and I'll just kick it off. But I think it's an important thing is, you know, Hermine made the point of this actually. When we were discussing what the community advocate was formerly known as the ombudsman, about how someone can make a complaint and the allowing, making sure you're allowed to still go anonymous, but with the hope and goal of building that trust so that it can be done non anonymously through that advocate in that form. So I think that was something that was brought up and Hermine wanted us to make sure we were clarified and I was in agreement. So Hermine, if you want to share anything about that or any, was it any issues or questions about that to make sure that we're on the same page?
I just had a process question. Was that, was it anonymous? Was the person anonymous in interacting with the ombudsman? Or was it a system where someone could put in an anonymous report into like a software program? That's where I just needed some clarity on that.
Right. So, so right now in chief, where's chief? I, that's what I'm looking around. There he is. So right now someone could make it an anonymous complaint and they just do it directly with the police department. I don't think we're stripping that right away, at least not initially. The goal is to have those complaints eventually go through whomever the advocate is to the police department and hopefully get the person to come forward. So there can be a genuine investigation one way or another. But as I think that process will still be in place to just make a complaint directly to the police department for now. Is that correct?
Do you have an anonymous alert system?
We, well, yes, you can get a, send us a tip through our Nixle. Somebody has the ability to call and not give their name and information and make a complaint and we would investigate.
But are you asking about the technical aspects of it? The, the technical side of it, Christine, not sort of how it works?
Yeah, I just, I didn't, I didn't know. There is, if there's a system in place where someone can give an anonymous report right now, what is the difference between what is going into this language around giving an anonymous report? That, that's what I'm trying to understand is, I think that's what we need to, at least I need to understand.
Well, well, part of it, and please someone else jump in if I'm saying it wrong or have a different understanding is once we create this position or this, this role that there'll be more engagement with that person and you couple that with the outreach that we hope to see with the police department, that there'll be more comfort and we'll educate people that you don't have to do it anonymously. You can, but you can now also have access to a person who can present your, your story, if you will, to the police department and be that bridge.
What is that being inherited? Isn't that inherent in the position?
Right, but the position doesn't exist now. So we're going to create this position so that the public can be educated that there is an alternative to just going anonymously.
If, if I may add, I, I think part of the issue, one of the things we were trying to address is that the, the nature of an anonymous complaint is we're going to, we're going to start with the premise that the person doesn't feel comfortable for whatever reason, giving their name and contact information, which is fine. And we don't really want to disturb that portion of it. The issue that we have with an anonymous complaint is that we don't have the ability to obtain the additional information we need to be able to do an investigation, let alone a thorough investigation. So you've got an individual in our community who feels wronged, who doesn't feel comfortable enough to offer their name and contact information, puts in a complaint, then is again wronged or aggrieved because from where they're sitting, nothing has been done. And whatever wrong existed, still exists.
Or alternatively, Jill, it's not an assumption that something was wrong. At the same time, whoever the accused, the officer is, Chief Carroll can do an investigation one way or another. It could turn out to be something serious or something that's a misunderstanding and inaccurate. So it protects both sides.
Oh, absolutely. But, but, but I think the real danger here is, is that if, if we are given an allegation that we need to investigate, we are being deprived of the follow-up that would allow us to be able to fully investigate and make sure that the person who lodged the complaint understands what the outcome was, whether, you know, there be discipline or whether it was a correction or whether it was a misunderstanding, whatever the case may be. There's, there's no ability for follow-up.
But that exists right now.
Right. And, and with, and it, and it isn't imperfect.
Right. System. So. To like figure out what are we adding on? Like what's the add-on? You have an anonymous system right now. Is the add-on the language in the position that the person can advocate anonymously on someone's behalf? Is that the, is that, is that the add-on that we, the language that we're looking for?
Right. We're, we're, we're looking for a position that is going to preserve the anonymity of the complainant, but allow the, the police, I'm sorry.
I was just going to say, I, I thought what we heard last week was that we needed to have both. So in our initial recommendation, we went with the idea of having the advocate and no longer accepting the anonymous complaint. And what we heard from Hermine last week, Hermine, you're on the phone. I don't mean to put words in your mouth. You can certainly speak for yourself. But what I heard you say last week was that we need to maintain the ability to have an anonymous complaint, even if we have this advocate position so that, you know, we, we strongly suggest that people take advantage of the advocate position. And we try to push as many people toward that as possible, but we need to maintain this, this channel to have an anonymous complaint. That's what I heard last week.
Right. And, and that was Hermine's point, but the, I, I don't think, I thought that the advocate was going to be able to maintain, and it was, it was certainly my, my intention that the advocate would maintain the, the anonymity of the complainant.
That's correct.
It is one of the things they can do.
Right. At, at the complainant's request, but we would still have the ability to be able to take and we need additional information. Okay. Tell us what you need. The liaison then takes and goes back to the complainant and says, the police are investigating. These are the facts that are missing that enable us to fully investigate the complaint. Would you be able to provide this with us? Yes. Here's the information. Thank you. Go back to the, our, our advocate goes back to the police and says, here is, here is your missing information. Go investigate. Let me know what you find out. Still maintaining that wall of anonymity for our complainants. So we're not losing the anonymity, but what we are doing is making sure that the complaint can be investigated. And by, oh, yes, I'm sorry.
My apologies. And also in terms of closing the loop. So when the police gets back to the community advocates, they can then contact the, the complainants and then there is a full circle. Another part of that position is sometimes just being able, even if the person is not interested in anonymity, but just to be able to accompany someone while they file a complaint. That is another aspect I would like to see as part of that role. One of the recommendations in, in, in that recommendation we had made from the CRE, we had discussed literally creating an online form where someone can fill that out and, and choose, you know, there would be a variety of volunteers and then they can choose who they would like to advocate on their behalf.
Yes, yes, absolutely. And, and it was our vision that the community advocates would have little personal blurbs about them. Just who they are, their background, just so that the, the person could just read a little bit about them and figure out who they felt more comfortable with or send an email that just says, I'm thinking about using a community advocate. Can you tell me a little bit more about yourself?
Right. Can I just ask? Because I, I guess I'm, I'm, I maybe don't understand it. We are then saying we're taking away the current channel for anonymous complaints and replacing it.
I think, absolutely.
Through the.
I thought we were. I thought that was the point.
Okay. So some people are saying no, and that's what I thought I heard last week. And Jill, I think you're saying, you're saying yes, that, that wouldn't be.
Well, I'm just, I'm confused because the anonymity is still there with the community advocate.
So, so my, I, I, I think that I, I maybe I'm seeing differently from Jill and maybe more like Vince. At least I'm looking at head shaking. So I may be right or wrong here, but we, in terms of the technical way you do it, I'm sort of indifferent to that. But you're still allowing someone to make a complaint. Should they not want to use this advocate? Just go ahead and make the anonymous complaint. Just know that it's going to be that much more difficult to, to get any resolution, right or wrong, good or bad. So I, we're going to market, if you will, then it's the right term, put it out there that there is this position and these people can be your bridge, either going to help you meet with the police or keep your anonymity and advocate, advocate, advocate. So you're not losing the old, you're just adding a new with the hope that eventually the old will disappear over time and people will be comfortable just using the new. That's my.
My understanding as well, Jeremy. That's to me would be ideal.
I'm just afraid people aren't going to use the advocate.
But then, you know. You know, I come from a, from a technology background a little bit. And so, you know, sometimes I do sort of see the world through that lens. And, you know, maybe there are, maybe this is a technology issue, you know? So maybe the, whatever the current channel is that we're, we're collecting this, is there a way to, you know, have a validation there? Before you submit this, did you know you can do this instead? And this, you know, that will enable you to have follow-up with the police department and to learn the outcome of whatever, you know, issue you're, you're raising.
I, I just to say, I was sort of seeing it like, kind of like three options. You have a complaint. You can call the chief. Should you want to call them to speak to the chief? You can submit an anonymous complaint. Or you can go and meet with a, the community advocate and have a private commerce anonymous conversation. These are the options you have. And each one, it's almost like a little bit of a decision tree. And so if it's set up, these are your three options for, you know, making a complaint. Doesn't that create the universe of, you know, isn't that clear for people?
Can I explain my concern within keeping an anonymous complaint? There's a potential for abuse there. If someone gets, gets arrested and with the new discovery laws and the new release of personnel records as part of their personnel complaints, as part of personnel records, an anonymous person could continue to make unfounded anonymous complaints against an individual officer, which will always be part of discovery and their credibility at a trial down the road. If we go through the C, the C A B, the community advocate, it would, it would minimize that, in my opinion. We wouldn't have the issue, but you still have the, the anonymity.
Well, let me ask you, Jim, let me ask you, Jim, is that a problem now?
We don't get any.
I don't want to react.
Right. But the discovery laws have just changed.
That's the thing I, I want to.
Yeah, the discovery laws have just changed.
Right, right. But we also don't, I mean, you're suggesting by that, Jim, that because the discovery laws have changed, now an unscrupulous actor can create a trail so that they can come back around and use again.
Correct.
Is there any place where that has actually happened in the country?
It's, it's brand new. I, I don't know. I can always speak, you know.
But again, I don't want, I don't want to make decisions based on fears of something that isn't happening versus something that is happening and we should.
This is also a recommendation from the district attorney's office as well. So I would imagine that that didn't come from nowhere on their end, but I don't.
Well, I'd like to see the data myself on that. Like, is this really?
What's the issue with having an anonymity through the, the community advocate? What's the issue with that? I mean, it does, it prevents the other problem.
So, so. The complainant just may not want to deal with anyone in the system.
Right.
They may feel that person is linked to the police and just may not be comfortable with it. That's, that's the issue. I, I think we all agree that if we have this system of the community advocate, it'd be better for everyone to use it, better for the person who's complaining. But some people just may not be comfortable with that.
You know, you know, I've had this issue, like anonymous complaints in a smaller setting. It's the camp, it's staff like making allegations against other staff without like saying anything. And I, and I always say like, I can't deal with it unless you come and talk to me. And so let's say somebody is making an honest complaint and you can, you can feed, you can send a or make a statement like, I would like to invite this person to come forward to do the community advocate because I can't deal with this.
I don't know how to do that if they're anonymous.
Well, you know, if you're submitting it online, isn't there a way to track, you know, all 15 of these complaints came from the theme IP address, you know, we're submitting, you know, so it would be confidential, but it would, you know, you'd still have a way of tracking that back to see that, you know, every single one of these was registered by the same person. So it's not, you know, it's not as though there's, there's complaints against a particular officer.
So the problem with that is, is the system has us ability to reply to them. It doesn't give us the IP address. And I think to do that, we would need a subpoena.
And I'm. Figure it out. You would, you need a subpoena to figure out who that IP belongs to, but not necessarily to get the IP.
I, I, I don't know that because I have to tell you that one of the reasons why none of this stuff is subject to foil is because we don't have access to anything.
But it's interesting because I, on my, for my private law practice, when someone sends a message through my site, I can see their IP.
Yeah, no, we cannot.
It's not through my Nixle tip notification. I can't.
Just, you know, I use one of these systems. People can abuse them. It's really hard when you have to go, and I don't have the same restrictions as Jim to figure out where it's coming from because people can do all kinds of things to mask their IP addresses. And if the district attorney is making a recommendation, I don't think that should be dismissed. And I think we have some time in the process, right? Because today's not the end day, not the end day to, to flesh that out a little bit more before coming to a conclusion that it makes sense to continue with that process based on the concerns that Jim's raising. I've lived in it and I don't have the same, I don't have the same rules that Jim has to live within. So I can maneuver it a little bit differently, but I have seen people write things over and over again that are really concerning. And I don't have, I don't have like the same level of response that needs to take place because I'm not the police, you know? So I just want to add that layer for people to think about. It's, it is a very complicated system, although it seems simplistic. It's not when it's not used right.
Could you just clarify what, what is the recommendation that came from the district attorney that you referenced?
That no police department of Westchester should receive anonymous complaints.
Okay. So that's, that's why.
Based on what? Based, yeah. Based on a theory that this could happen or?
Because it does happen.
Is happening.
Let me suggest this. Let me suggest this, not because I think it's a viable question. Let's, let's find out from the district attorney's office, the, the theory of, you know, I'll reach out. What their theory is and why they're doing it. It's, I think it's an easy answer. Whether we agree or not, we can cross that bridge, but instead of us speculating, we'll just ask, get the answer why they suggest.
I'd like to suggest another possibility that we could, if this becomes a problem, then stop doing it. Because the one thing that I am sensitive to in this is racism. This idea that, that, you know, because somebody will abuse it, a very valuable tool for people who are disenfranchised to get their voices heard would be eliminated out of a fear that somebody could abuse something. Now, it's possible that it could be abused, but currently we have no evidence that it is. And with the change that, that Jim has said, that there's a change now because of the new, the new rules, it could be. But yet we have no evidence that it would be. And so why not allow ourselves the flexibility to say, let's see what happens?
Well, you know, I don't think that the district attorney's office would come out with a recommendation that was sort of, you know.
Cavalier, not going out.
I, I, I think, I think Jeremy's suggestion to follow up with them and find out the reason for the recommendation and then to, you know, have further conversation based on what we learned makes a lot of sense to me. Because just because it hasn't happened here, doesn't mean it hasn't happened elsewhere. And just because we're a small town doesn't mean it couldn't happen here under certain conditions. So I, I, I think it makes sense just to follow up and find out from the DA's office.
And there may be another reason. It may be that they just, the DA's office wants more viable evidence. If there's some wrongdoing as opposed to a dead end, which anonymous complaints routinely work to, that may just be the reason why too. It may not be a fear out of abuse of the system. It may be because it leads to often to nothing unless there's substance behind it. So.
I suspect, I suspect the reasons what the chief alluded to, that the DA's office doesn't want complaints, whether substantiated or unsubstantiated in police officers' files. Because the chief is correct, that has to be turned over now under the new discovery laws.
Well, if they're substantiated, then so be it. We don't care. But the point is, is that if they're unsubstantiated, and I have to tell you, we, we have a police department that's significantly more diverse than our population. And so it, it isn't just protecting white officers, it's protecting all of our officers, a significant number of whom are members of the BIPOC community. I don't want to like unfounded allegations against anybody. And we have seen in our community, just from the one instance that where we've tried a community advocate, it has worked with tremendous success. Where someone who felt that they were being targeted for, you know, for, for their race, they, they felt that a police officer, you know, singled them out about something. And at the end of the day, when we were able to, you know, get all of the facts and details and stuff like that, it turned out it was, it was a very, it had nothing to do with, it was just a misunderstanding and it was a bad.
I don't think anybody is arguing that point. I mean, you know, I, I think, I think we all are in agreement that the community advocate is, is the best approach. But just, you know, going back to Vince's concept of, you know, three different channels, choose the one that's, that works best for you kind of thing, to take away one avenue that somebody can, you know, file a complaint today. I think we just want to be mindful before we go down that path. The reason why we're recommending that. Yeah, yeah.
Harvey, there was the gentleman I spoke with last week. Harvey, can you send me an email? His name escapes me and.
Tom Luzio?
It was Tom Luzio. I'll reach out. He offered to, to, to sort of help us and meet with us too. So I'll reach out to him.
Yeah, he's not, he's not a member of the DA's office.
No, I know that, but he, he, I think he was on the transition team and he was a chief, he was a chief in narcotics.
Yeah, that's, that's correct. He's, he's close with the district attorney.
Right. And I think he worked with George Latimer, the county on this issue as well. So, but either way, I can reach out to DA's office directly too.
Frank Lewis is still a tech, a member of our, one of our stakeholders as well, and I'll reach out to him also.
You know, the other, the other thing that occurs to me is I, I, I'm unfamiliar with if these groups exist, but the, the, you know, outside of government, good government groups, I don't know if it's an IPR, do they have an opinion about anonymous complaints against police? Like an out, I mean, I, the DA needs to say what the DA needs to say, but I'd also like to hear it from people who deal with those who can't get their voices heard. Like what do they think about this question? And does anybody have any contact with groups like that? No, nobody. Yeah.
At least. All right. So, so this issue, I think we, I think we're clear that we have, we have issue with this issue, to work through this issue. So let's all do our homework. As, as Christine said, we're not resolving it today. Let's all do our homework and circle back for, for next week on this issue. Does that sound reasonable?
Can I just ask, Vince, do you mean like the ACLU?
Somebody, I mean, I, I, I just think that, so just to say, just because the DA wants something, you know, I'm kind of like, yeah, the DA has lots of motivations. Some of them are good, some of them might not be. And there are lots of political forces involved in this. And so I would just like to hear the dissenting opinion from somebody who's done more research than, you know, my gut. This is really what my comments are making. Like, doesn't sound right.
I also go back to the fact that, you know, community advocate does, you know, have the opportunity for additional information and for feedback. Where the anonymous complaint doesn't have any of that. So.
All right.
What to next?
So, so another issue that was raised, and this is sort of an easier one before we move on, was body cameras was a suggestion. And, and I think, chief, please tell me if I'm wrong. I think most people, not all of us agree on that. Well, you're not going to answer that, but the police department would agree on it. It's more of a dollars issue and figuring out how we can store that data and, and the costs and whether the county can help us or the state.
I believe that's where, that was the mindset of the group.
So I, I think we all want that. So I don't think, is anyone here not want body cameras? Seeing no hands. So, so the, the, another thing that we discussed was the concept of the mental health professionals, which we, you know, we discussed and the public brought it into sort of the pod idea and how that would work. So, you know, is it, is the county assigning someone for, you know, Mount Kisco, Newcastle, North Castle? And, and then we discussed the fact that Austin may want to do the West End, but trying to work with larger, you know, up the, up the food chain in terms of government to make this pod thing work. So I open the floor if anyone wants to comment on that.
My, my first comment about this, I was just surprised by how important this was to the people who came. That this is, seems to be a much bigger issue than I thought it was. And is that, is that what the rest of you think? I mean, did anyone get that sense that this is a big?
I, I agree. And we have some very recent cases as well. Recently in Rochester, this nine-year-old child who was suicidal was literally pepper sprayed by, you know, the respondent offices. I think ideally what we should strive to work towards is to not have the police respond, be the ones responding to these type of incidents. I, I could, they could be called for backup if someone is, becomes violent. But the, you know, we always talk about when do we use force, like force is always an option. It's always seen to be on the table. And I think there should be an absence of that in addressing mental health crisis. What we would like to strive for ideally is to have a team of social workers who can respond and the police can be there for backup if, if needed, or they can be called for backup. But ideally they should not be the first ones on the scene.
You know, I, I appreciate that, but I think by the time we're called for backup, it's, it's too late. And I think it's unrealistic to, to think that, you know, we will not be the first responder. Somebody calls 911 because even having that kind of an issue, I think that we are the best person to be there initially, at least to try to deescalate and hold down the scene. That, that Rochester incident was terrible and they have had a terrible year with some of the decisions they've made up there. But within the last month, there was a social worker, mobile crisis team that went to the city of Poughkeepsie. And because the officer was there, he saved her life and got stabbed. So you're walking into, you know, a situation, the team approach would be best, of course, in my opinion. And if it's not violent and the team, you know, officer stays outside or takes a secondary role, great. But to just say the blanket statement that we should push for officers not to respond, I, I, I don't think it's feasible or workable.
Well, maybe it's differential then, because people, we talked about the two, one, one thing. It's like, again, kind of a menu. Like if, if somebody is reaching out from a mental health crisis for a family member, I think of that, it's got to be pretty bad. So I can see what you're saying, chief, about things kind of have gotten out of control in the home, the situation. That's why they're reaching out for an emergency. So there is rationality to what you're saying about, if it's that bad, they're not calling the therapist saying, help me with.
Or they tried, right? I think.
They tried.
History, that, that was the first step or, you know, or the. History that that was the first step or, you know, or they do call the crisis team because it isn't so far that they call nine one one and they call the crisis team because it's not that level, then they should go first for sure and say, hey, we're going. Most times they would call us anyway. That's how it was in the past, but that could be changed in the future. And. I think we all agree how important issue it was to the community, and it really was. And that the county, thank goodness, is working on a solution, you know.
Is. Is is there any use to like, and this is kind of outside of the police. But kind of goes back to Ivy, the the thing about educating our community about what their options are for mental health crises. Including the police, but there are other if there are others that we can. Like at least put out that you can do this, you can do this. Of course, you can call nine one one, but there are other steps ahead of that. Is that a useful thing to start to think about?
Now, I think about like when you call the police, you're calling because you can't. And you and you have someone in crisis, you're calling because you need like help immediately. I don't know if I'd be able to have a conversation about who else I should call in that moment on the phone.
Well, I'm saying ahead of that, ahead of the crisis.
Ideally, we're not calling nine one one for that. Ideally, they're moving towards the two one one number. Which would then be, you know, a team of social workers and as the chief would like for the police to be there. So. It would be a whole team responding rather than just nine one one, which goes to the police.
And I wouldn't even have an objection if it was right. If it does work like that, that it just goes to the crisis unit and they're and the information they get, they're comfortable not calling us. I'm fine with that. I just. Didn't want to think that we should try to stay away from police going because I just don't think that's going to do it because there's plenty of incidents where we get called to respond.
That solution, Chief. I like call the two one one, which goes to the crisis team. And if they deem they need the police involvement, they can relay that.
Yeah, I mean, it really is interesting because. When you think about it, like what when somebody calls nine one one on in a mental health crisis. They're agitated, they're upset, they're afraid and all these all those things. What are they really hoping the cops are gonna do? That just occurred to me like, what are you hoping I'm gonna do here? Like, take your child, husband, father into custody? Like, is that what you want from me?
A lot of times people call because they don't know what to do.
They don't know what to do.
Sure.
Right. And puts the cop in a horrible spot.
Sure.
What can what do you want me to do?
Sure. The other thing you have to realize too, a call may be described nine one one, but. When the police get there, it could possibly be a much more serious situation, like a person may call and say, you know, someone. Someone is acting out, but then police arrive and someone has a gun. And, you know, that's not mentioned in the call. So. There's that element of surprise. Just one other thing I want to say in other communities, I'm on a few other committees. This is also a very, very hot topic. Everyone seems to be concerned with responding to. Emotionally disturbed people or people are having some sort of emotional reaction. So all across Westchester, people seem to be concerned about.
Yeah.
I'd like to give an example of what happened over the weekend. I I when I went on Monday, I read the report and I I just was very pleased with how it was handled. A woman called about her husband who she thought was in crisis. We responded. You know, deescalated the situation, interviewed the 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 husband. And ultimately, had no indication that he was a threat to himself or others. Well, the woman, the wife wanted him brought for an evaluation. Officers didn't have enough that they felt it was necessary, it would do it. Contacted the therapist. Therapist felt that we should. Put him into custody. My officers said, fine, if you're willing to sign a commitment order because based upon our investigation, it doesn't warrant that. They said no originally. A few hours later, they actually did sign a commitment order. Officers went back. And he did go without officers having used force. You know, they had a commitment officer and they convinced him to go. So, you know, more often than in our community, that's how things work. But I just thought you should get an example of.
That is a fantastic example of how complicated.
Yeah.
This is. And I, you know, good job for the police officer. I.
I'm wondering, can you give us, Jim, what like the last year has been like? I mean. Any idea in terms of like the kind of mental health responses and problems that there've been?
You know, I I I did. I did pull them up actually yesterday, and there were eighteen. Emotionally disturbed person calls within the last year. I don't have a breakdown of how many were actually transported to hospital or not. I didn't.
Can you define EDP? Can you define what when someone's EDP, what that means and?
So we, well, I mean. I guess. Somebody says that there's some there that a person in their life is having mental or emotional issues.
Does it be absorbed by the officer or can it be shared by the?
It could be either, right? It could be reported that way, or it could be reported as a medical case. And they turn it and say, no, it's an emotionally disturbed person. So it's it's really.
It's a real wide range of what that means.
Correct.
I'm answering this question.
You said there were eighteen.
Eighteen, yeah.
Do you have the breakdown on those in terms of? Of the either ages or races or anything?
I did race because I I thought that might be of interest. All of them were white.
How does that compare to other years? Thank you.
Yeah, interesting question.
Yeah, especially with the pandemic, yeah.
I can get that for you. You know, I'm gonna I'm not gonna be visible, but I'll be listening.
I thought age involved in factors too.
I I'm sorry. Can I just ask one more question? Do we have a a working two one one system in Westchester County?
Ivy's better to answer that. But yeah, but it's not the way we would want it as a group.
So it's it is not a so I I'm thinking about these pods, these mental health pods that that we're hoping that the. The Westchester County is going to create strategically located. And I'm envisioning that a two on one call going to a crisis center would then dispatch a. A member of the pod to based upon geography. To take in and respond to a home where an individual is in need. Is is the two on one system as it currently exists, something that would do that?
Yeah.
No. Okay.
But just to say eighteen. Is three every two months. That's now I understand why people are so worried. That's happening. That's a frequency that that concerns me. That it's that often.
Well, and that's why it'll be interesting to see if this is just this past year. Because of all of the COVID issues and people kind of being stuck together, whether they wanted to be or not. Or whether, you know, just just. How normal it is. That's an odd word to use in this situation, but is eighteen like a usual?
No problem.
Or is that high?
In terms of of the the language around the recommendation, like what are we trying to flush out right now? Whether or not we're going to promote a two on one system that's in the county, whether we're going to have our own system. I'm just trying to figure out where we're where we're going.
I don't know that our own system. I I don't think that this is something that we can do as a standalone. I really think it needs to be a at the very least a county. System that would not only be an intervention line, but also a. A resource for people calling up that don't necessarily have an immediate. Need, but just are, you know, looking for some resources. I think Ivy had mentioned that the that the two on one system that's an offshoot of of New York City. Was a a resource for health and human services.
Yeah, I I don't know how the county is intending to to route calls to the the pods that they're creating, you know, whether they're going to create a. Standalone eight hundred number or something to to intake those calls. I I I don't know. I think we're kind of. The the point for us locally would be that we're we're waiting awaiting instructions about how to, you know, route the calls from that we would receive to our police desk to. Whatever the intake system is for the county for their part.
Right.
I think we just don't know. We're kind of waiting to get that that information, whether they're leveraging two one one to do that routing or they're, you know, creating some.
So are we looking at adding some language to what we've already put out? Is that what we're trying to do right now to say that we're strongly supporting a two one countywide two on one system and using that as a resource and communicating that out? To the community? Is that what we're trying to flesh out right now? Or is it something else?
Well, there in the original recommendations and the things that we that in the what we put together. Given what what Jim just said, there was a couple of things that are in there like taking advantage of debriefing situations that worked really well to take. Advantage of the strengths already existing among the police officers. Because clearly there's some strength there if that went so well. The other thing it suggests is continuous. And this may be something through law enforcement organizations and maybe just mental health organizations. Continuous investment in training the police officers because no matter what. The two one one. If somebody calls nine one one and says, my family member, whatever is going on, the police have to go. And they're gonna need to be as well equipped as they possibly can be in those situations. So there's maybe it's two. It's like supporting the. The mental health thing, but also investing in the police officers.
I I think that's fair. I think the message, you know, I like how Christine tries to bring us back. Well, that's the educator in her tightening it up. Um, I didn't hear you, but I I see that you agree. So I I think it's two pronged, which is encouraging the two on one system to be implemented. In the way we're discussing it, but to Vince's point, to educate as best we can and continually educate. Our first responders, meaning the police officers here, to be able to identify and manage these situations and these crises. Because, you know, I think I think Harvey would agree without putting words in his mouth, chief would agree, and the police officers on on this call would agree. In theory, it sounds nice that that a social worker just shows up, but in reality, no, no one's going to allow a person to go into that situation without the police knowing first. If there's a danger of someone's armed, if there's a threat, they have to make sure that the situation is stable and safe before anyone. Else could could be there. And realistically, in the moment, you as even as a social worker, aren't going to want to be the first necessarily to go into an apartment. You know, or a house, not knowing what's going on, who has access to what, you know, so the police are going to respond. So education is critical, critical, critical. And I think that's.
I agree with that, but I also think one step further, which is I don't think we should be letting the county off the hook because I do think that it's one thing for our offices to walk in. To have the tools to be able to to deal with the immediate situation. But I think it's a. In all fairness, they are not certified mental health professionals. They're not all going to be certified therapists. And I think. In fairness to them, you have to give them the tools to succeed. So if this is a prevalent. Situation now, I think the county has to create these pods whereby. Mental health professionals are dispatched to assist the police. So they're not dealing with this all by themselves. They're they're able to. Secure the scene, make sure everybody's safe and just sit tight for a couple of minutes until the mental health professional can walk in there. Properly assess the situation and then the police are there standing back to allow the mental health professional to take charge of the situation. And and resolve it, whatever that might be.
Since there's two police officers here, how's that all land with you guys? Anthony and Craig. Any comment?
I think Jill pretty much hit it on the head. It's a it's a tough scenario that we're going into.
Yeah. I mean, the police respond to fires too, but they're not expected to put them out. They 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 sit there, they secure the scene, they're sure things okay. And they wait for the 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 guys that deal with this to show up. And I think it's an awful lot to put on our officers that on top of everything else. That they're certified mental health professionals, that they're trained in this, yes, that they're de-escalation, you know, training, they've got it, they they're greeted it, but. You know, you you gotta give them the support that that they deserve.
Yeah, I feel and I could be wrong in the process. I feel like we're in the revising phase like I I and I could I could like. We put out the plan, we got feedback, and now we're in revisions. We're not back into discussion about.
Right.
Part of the plan that we already fleshed out, we need. So that's kind of how I was envisioning this meeting going. So what in the lens? The revision. So when we go back out, we can revise it and get feedback on that. Is that?
That was gonna be the final. That that was that was the hope that we were going to take the comments that we got last week, sort of, you know, refine this down. For the mental health services certainly embellish it because I think, you know, now we're talking about a two on one system in addition to the mental health pods. And, you know, again, addressing it with with Westchester County, you know, the body cams, you know, strongly advocating for the funding, whether it be through county or the state. And we're just waiting on.
Am I revising it? Like, as I did the mental health thing, is that how like it's my responsibility to go do this or is somebody else doing it? I just want to know.
No, I was, I I don't. I don't know that it was your section necessarily that that we will be doing because your section really had to do with. Enhanced. Mental health training and debriefing for our officers where I envisioned this as that that we are able to do sort of in-house that that we can do within Newcastle.
Okay.
Versus, somebody stop me if I'm wrong. Versus these recommendations, the two on one system, the mental health pods that we were urging Westchester County. To take an institute as the necessary supports that our force needs to be able to succeed.
Okay, I just want to know who was gonna.
Yeah, no, no. So I, yeah, Tiffany and I, I think we're on.
Okay.
As it's as an offshoot from that and to something, you know, Christine is trying to break it down to the language and that's fair. But some of this is discussion because there's ideas that people brought up and we needed just to address them at a courtesy of the people who who were involved, whether we agree or not.
Oh, I agree. I think that the feedback we got from the community is part of the revision process.
Yeah, okay, okay.
They add on, but I also, you know, I I want to just be cautious. You don't go back and rehash our discussions about things that we've already decided.
Well, I I I don't know if this is rehashing, but I a couple of people, I believe, last week brought up the issue of sort of a volunteer brigade. Of local people who can assist in these in this process. And I don't remember where we fell on that or if we discussed it before. We're mixing things or I'm mixing things, pardon me. And just speaking for myself. Jill, did we discuss that before previously?
So so we we did. It was auxiliary police.
Was this more of a social worker?
No, that's.
No, that's different. That's.
They also talked about community members. And actually Joanna was the one who offered to the speaker that there were neighborhood pods that the CRE. Was working on.
That's right. Yes.
So.
It was one of our goals to. Come up with neighborhood pods. And it's something which we are working on. So once we have more information on that, it'll be distributed to everyone.
And to clarify, that's a difference between someone who is is a social worker saying, I'm willing to give my time. Because, you know, I I just speaking for myself, if I had an issue, I don't want to see someone we know all of a sudden coming in, and that's the person in our small community. Who's now dealing with my mental health crisis. I don't know if I'd feel comfortable in that way. And there's legal issues that may run up with the municipality and how we would deal that. So what what Joanna is saying is something different and distinct. And I just want to make sure that I'm understanding this correctly.
So so to put into perspective what the neighborhood part is, it's something like a neighborhood watch. And I think it's totally separate and different from what we had discussed with. When we put a list of resources out, we'll have like. Like Vince as one of the social workers or Reverend Jacobs as one of them. So, you know, people who can. Go with the police to de-escalate a situation.
All right. So I think we move to the next topic, I think. And Martha, you you wanted to share something from Kim?
Well, no, actually, I'm just, Jim, were you able to get the information so we can just close that loop?
I apologize.
I I I couldn't access it on my own, but I'm having it done. So as I get it, then I'm hoping to get it next couple few minutes. I'll get it to everybody.
Great, okay. I'm I'm sorry, Jeremy. I wasn't trying to take over your meeting. I just wanted to not forget myself what what I was hoping to get. So I believe the issue that Kim wanted to make sure we discussed and it was raised last week as well as the education level.
Right.
Of officers or of people before they are. Interviewed to become police officers in Newcastle. And the recommendation, I believe, was a four year college or associate's degree and then. Going into the academy. And that was that something that. The the town of Newcastle could in fact make as a part of their. Requirements versus, you know, what it might be for the rest of the county. I am I right? I mean, is that isn't that?
That's that's what that was Kim's suggestion.
Okay.
Does the Westchester?
Group hadn't weighed in on it.
Does the Westchester Police Act allow you to do that if you know? I'm just. Does the Westchester Police Act allow you to do that if you know, I'm just in a position, but do they allow you to say you can require that someone be educated to X level?
I don't know that.
First, you can't preclude somebody because this is maybe an easy question because if you're not allowed to, we should find that out.
Yeah, was her recommendation that the town of Newcastle do it or that that this group make a recommendation to state or civil service that there be that requirement?
I think my guess, I think it's both. So it was my understanding that both the town of Newcastle, but also beyond that. Um, and and Hermine and I, I you were a part of that discussion, I think, as part of the group, correct? Uh, the CRE, you're you're muted, so. Wait, Hermine, you're muted.
Well, Hermine is muted. I'll just push off. Okay, go ahead, Hermine.
Hi, we we do want it to be a state recommendation. That, uh, and I do understand the flip side to that. One of our members commented about losing out on on people with prior military experience who, um, you know, who can be good police officers. On another discussion group I'm on, someone actually said that that was a form of elitism. Um, basically requiring with a a path that was normally something for someone who might not be primed for higher education to go in that this is no block. If we require a higher level of education. And, um, you know, I I I know it's a a much it's far reaching, but could the two-year education become a part of the police academy?
Right. And and yeah, because my concern is also would it? And I know in my department, it would affect the officer of color that I have if that was the requirement. I may not have a half of the officers I currently done. So is it, does it have a negative effect requiring more education to the BIPOC community? And I don't know the answer to is that go back to elitism argument?
Right. And so my original thoughts, when when we had that discussion in the other group, we were proposing making the police academy three years. So right, so they get a full um, uh, associate's degree plus with a focus on on, you know, more trainings in psychology and and de-escalation. Less of a focus on on the use of firearms, et cetera. Um, so rather than saying go get a degree before you apply, a workaround was to include um, that as part of the police academy.
What is the length of the police academy now?
Twenty-six weeks.
State by state.
It four to six weeks?
Twenty-six.
Seven, seven hundred hours. Seven hundred hours.
Um, you have to realize that doesn't the Newcastle town Newcastle pay for people to be in the academy? So you would be paying for three years of a person being in the academy.
You get what you're. Leave and go somewhere else.
You know, I I I have to, I I'm like stunned. My training for being a chaplain was sixteen hundred hours of hands-on work. In addition to my my degree and and my my seminary work. And I'm just stunned that it's only twenty-six weeks. Uh, that that that's all that's required. Because you do have other people's lives in your hand. I mean, I I I had people's spiritual lives in my hands, you know, and and spent a lot more time than people do in the academy. So I I just have to say that just really surprises me. And 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 that doesn't take away from from the officers and what they're able to do. It just is like seems to me not to be enough.
Yeah, but there's also field training once they get out of the academy and chief, they're sort of on probation for a year or so.
They absolutely are on probation for a year, yes.
But so what is field training con system?
They're they're assigned to a senior officer who, um, and each individual department is um, is different, but you know, it's usually six weeks to three months where um, they learn, you know, our rules and regs and, you know, um, they see an officer as a partner the whole time and and the ins and outs of more hands-on experience. Um, but I I I almost like the the way that Hermine's talking about the recommendation going, and maybe it isn't a two-year degree, maybe it's thirty credits to start, it's a year or whatever it is, but I would be afraid to to just exclude people, you know, who don't have any education. Just just because, like I said, I, you know, I have excellent officers who just have you know, uh, a high school diploma. And and you know, and also would want military to count or corrections to count or life experience to count, you know, you know, there's other things that can make people good, well-rounded um, contributing police officers, so.
Wasn't there somebody? I think this was what I think Kim had mentioned, some credit for certain kinds of experience.
Yes.
When she mentioned that, is there? This. I mean, you've mentioned a few of them, but um, you're like for me, I like if somebody, if if somebody wanted to become a police officer who had spent two years being a childcare worker in a group home, that would be perfect for a police officer. But um.
I I interviewed somebody who said that they were um, customer service rep for Walmart was the best training they had as a police officer.
Yeah, but I think, um, you know, I I I don't know if there's a system for that kind of credit. I don't know.
Well, when you take the, um, okay, so my my experience on this is all New York City, so um, correct me if I'm I'm saying something that doesn't apply to Westchester County. When you take the police officer exam, aren't you scored according to, you know, one of the components of that exam is your sort of level of education and experience and you would then be getting sort of additional points for things like military service or or service in the corrections department or or so on?
Yes, uh, in Westchester, you can certainly you get credits. I think it's five credits if you use it to get hired on top of your um, your initial civil service exam. If you don't use your five credits, then you can use two and a half credits later on to a promotion. So it does give you military. And if you want to go back to it, the that test isn't based upon what your education is, is based upon your raw score. So is that an indicated level of intelligence? Maybe, you know, I don't, I don't know.
Well, I think for me, um, one of the things I want to point out is that I I think we can all agree that greater training is required or should be required. Um, it's just, how do we get there and what is the focus on? Um, because I remember hearing about how much time was spent in firearms training. And, um, you know, and it it's all seemed to be revolved revolving around use of force and not so much of the core training. We we might have cultural sensitivity training as a workshop later on, but the core course to graduate from the police academy seems to revolve a lot around the use of force. So, um, I would definitely say my recommendation would definitely be to make the police academy a three-year program where you can earn X number of credits towards life experience, et cetera, and um, and really have a well-rounded academy. Uh, in terms of the content.
So might might I suggest to wear Christine's hat for a second when we talk about the language that we're proposing? You know, arbitrarily, three years, two years, four years, I think to a certain extent. I'm not a professional enough in that capacity to say what it would require. It may be three years, it may be two and a half years, maybe four years. But we are recommending to the county that whatever the education is now, requirement is now, we're asking for that to increase and to, you know, ensure that it hits a few particular areas. So because I, you know, you could say three years, but what does that, what does that mean?
Yeah, I actually, I actually like the the seven hundred hour thing. I think that a recommendation could be that that training, uh, the academy should be, it should include an additional seven hundred hours, which would double it from twenty-six and twenty-six weeks to fifty-two weeks. And seven hundred hours and the other seven hundred hours are covering things that are not now, well, I don't know that they're covered, but in more detail. De-escalation, all those things, communities of color, DEI, systemic racism, all of it, like you have all that. And that would be an an easier concrete thing. We want to double this to fifty-two weeks. And that, and what we want fourteen hundred hours of training instead of seven hundred hours.
I I would just add this practically speaking, and chief, tell me if I'm misunderstanding from stating something wrong. Because we're paying for it as a municipality eventually. And municipal like Newcastle might be able to absorb that far easier than a less affluent municipality. So and with the bigger police force. So it may be, you know, there's so many moving complex issues. That's why I say, instead of us saying an arbitrary number. It it, you know, there needs to be some, especially if we're paying it for our own, but if it's coming from county or state dollars. Someone needs to decide and figure out what it is. And that's a higher pay grade than us, but whatever is happening now, we we believe affirmatively that it's not enough.
Jeremy, don't don't we need to understand the the curriculum as it is now to understand where we want more? So we we want to double the training time, but where where do we want that focused?
I'm not suggesting, that's what I was saying. I I would suggest you just double the training time. We want, we want to make sure that it's a, we're not in a position to say what should or shouldn't, other than we know there's general areas.
Yep.
We're not in the academy. I don't know what they're doing on a daily basis, but to Hermine's point, you know, for example, there's firearm training, which probably statutorily or they have to have a certain amount of hours. But is there, you know, the same degree of of, you know, we use the term cultural sensitivity or awareness training? Um, that, you know, identifying, you know, mental health issue training. So we want to make sure that 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 is a piece of it, and if it's not there to elevate it.
Yeah, that that is, that is, I sent out um, the syllabus of what the academy does. And I know the county is calling for more training with regards to uh, bias, procedural justice. Topics like like that.
Yeah, I was, I was actually just gonna say the same thing. I pulled it up right now and um, one of the recommendations coming out of the county is to increase the training hours for the for the police academy and to have a week devoted to procedural justice, cultural diversity and biased crimes and incidents. And they also have a recommendation um, to extend the probationary period uh, from one year to two years as well.
That's great.
A week? Did you say it was to extend the training by one week? Is that what you said?
Said extended, I don't think she gave it.
Yeah, no, the one week is to have a week that's dedicated to that those topic areas.
I and I would just say a week is not a big amount of time.
I don't think she said, he said to extend it and then, but I don't know if that if I mean, we summarized it correctly, but they said extended, they didn't say how long, but they say of the extension, at least one week would be that, but maybe that's.
Is that what that means?
I don't. I'm in front of me, maybe Ivy does.
No, no, Ivy's got it.
Yeah, no, it's I I I'll I'll keep going. Um, so they break that down. They say two days, two full days focused on cultural diversity. Um, and intercultural competency, a training to address cultures, religions, ethnicities, backgrounds, the county's diverse population, et cetera. Two full days of procedural justice focusing on recognizing and interpreting implicit bias. And then one full day related to biased crimes and incidents.
And and just speaking from, I I do a lot of think something called emergent learning that takes time. And when you're talking about somebody who's whatever their experience is with their, we all have bias, the bias that you've got. One week of that isn't going to make a dent.
Right.
What you're talking about. It's nice. It's good that they're talking about it. But one week is.
So adds some words like sustained, ongoing, annual. You know, maybe that's in our our language and our recommendation to the county for their police academies.
I was gonna, I was gonna actually say something along those lines. I think that's fair. I think that's reason because we're, again, I don't think I could say three days additional, seven hundred hours additional.
I I can say one week is not enough to do that, to make an impact.
We're agreeing with you. We're 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 sort of agreeing with you. Christine is saying, tell me from what Christine is that whatever it is, it has to be sustained. It has to be additional. There has to be ongoing. So we're not saying specifically in our recommendation, seven hundred hours, we're using a more more broad language, right? Is that what you're suggesting, Christine?
But what I'm saying is not, it's what Vince is saying in a different way. It's not a one-shot deal. It's got to be ongoing yearly, annually, and that's what we use.
I I I agree with that, but I also think we should make a comment that one week. I mean, if you say like, if if they came up with a plan and saying this is one week and every year there needs to be something, if that's where it settles for them. It's just that I think we need to raise the understanding that a a three-hour session on racial bias gives you some information, but it does not get down to the kind of reflection and messiness that anyone would have to do, everyone would have to do if they're going to expand their understanding and their way of being in the world. You know, I just to speak about this, some people may have experienced a therapy. Therapy, you know, two sessions of therapy does nothing for you. It's a, you're right, sustained, but there needs to be raising their concern that having one week of something is not enough. And there maybe the recommendation is somebody needs to look carefully at what an effective amount of time in DEI or cultural sensitivity has an impact. Maybe that's the recommendation.
The minimum requirements are determined by the Department of Criminal Justice Services.
Right.
And then you have individual counties who can do more than that in our county does, and they're looking to expand it. So maybe the recommendation is something like Jeremy said, that you know, we make a recommendation to the state that, um, you know, there's an increase in um, hours for the police academy to include such and such. Uh, I don't know. Maybe that's where the recommendation goes. If that, if it increases there, then does it fall back to the county to increase more?
Yeah, I mean, right. I mean, administratively, somebody's gonna have to take that on, but they, I think, representing the 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 level, the enormity of the work is what I get worried about. Taking, you know, one class in, you know, how the brain works. You forget it. Uh, two days later, it doesn't, it doesn't doesn't have that much of an impact.
So I I I again, I think why Christine's language is valuable because it it's using that ongoing and sustained language. So you don't forget it, or at least you're constantly addressing it. Um, in case you're not dealing with it in the field every year or every six months, whatever it may be. I just think a language should be more broad as opposed to dictating specifically a timeframe or an amount.
Yeah, I can live with that. I just, um, you know.
Okay, sorry, just as I, as I was flipping through this section of the county's report, they they do also have a recommendation to to make the the implicit bias training annual as well.
So another comment, I'm sorry, I mean, and and on this, but I think we're, are we now in agreement? I I think we are.
Jeremy, I have the numbers for uh, since two thousand sixteen. There was twenty-one cases in two thousand sixteen, twenty-four and seventeen, twenty-eight and eighteen, fifteen and nineteen. I'm sorry, it's fifteen and twenty, twenty-eight and nineteen, twenty-four and eighteen and twenty-one and seventeen. So the minimum we had was fifteen and the most we had was twenty-eight.
Big deal.
That was two thousand and nineteen.
So this was not the largest, huh? That's interesting.
To me, so many different things within reason, though it's it's hard to compare apples to apples.
Right, agreed.
I mean, I I remember hearing regularly, I don't hear it as much as defense attorney, but he's EDP, 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 it's just something. Um, so there was.
I'm sorry, I'm I'm just trying to capture this because after everybody, you know, brainstorming. I know it's all over my paper, but I I I don't have a um, a clear vision as to what it is we're saying. Um, I I believe that we are asking for an increase in the term of the police academy. We're not specifying a specific term to increase it, but just something that would address mental health, cultural diversity, um, bias, procedural justice. Um, the implicit bias training. That we would, it would include some sort of credits for military service corrections, prior work experience that's relevant to the field.
I think the other thing, Jill, the other thing was that there would be ongoing training.
Right. So, yeah, so that's, I'm sorry, that's my, don't don't hold that thought. Also, um, extending the probationary period, did we have thoughts on that one way or the other? Um, also, um, extending the probationary period, did we have thoughts on that one way or the other? Are we supporting that?
Yes, we are.
Yeah. I wouldn't think.
I don't think, I don't think it hurts to do it at all.
Okay. Um, do we, do we have a, a thought as to what we would be extending it to, or just want to leave it as joining the county in, 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 you know, supporting their request for an extension of the probationary period?
I, I would think we would join the county again. We're not in the field, you know, we're not in that area to say what's between two and a half years or three years probation. So I think doubling is sufficient.
That's a requirement of civil service, so it's a county agency anyway.
Yeah.
So I think ultimately they're going to, we can support them that they're going to increase it.
Jill, another, um, thing, I, I really liked, uh, Vince's, uh, recommendation that we have a curriculum specialist. Basically, if we come up with the, the, to come up with the fields that the, the areas in which they would need greater training and what would be an adequate amount of time. So whereas we're not you know, I am saying three years, three years sounds about right to me. It's what's done in Norway and Sweden and all of those places. But, um, with a, with, uh, if we can have a curriculum specialist look at what should be trained and, and then come up with an appropriate amount of time.
I, I, our recommendation should be the Department of Criminal Justice Services does that, not us.
Right, yes.
Yeah, and I think Christine's language around sustained focus is useful.
Yeah.
The D C J S retain a curriculum speci- specialist to recommend adequate training for training subjects and the appropriate time for each. And that's to design and extended in the training. I will circulate this language.
Jill, may I bother with one other thing? The, uh, just step in back for a quick minute to the previous, uh, conversation about the mental health. Um, the responding to the mental health crisis. One of the things we had also recommended was that they show up without lights or sirens or anything. And also if it was possible that, um, they be plainclothed or, you know, uh, uh, as far as possible to, to, to not escalate. Um, someone who might be in, in, to, to not trigger someone who might be in mental health distress. Um, I do know it's sometimes not practical for the person to, for the police officers to change or, um, get out of uniform, but um, I think in a case of a mental health issue, if they can show up in an unmarked car or with, um, without sirens, that would be helpful.
It's, it's, it's not realistic. Um, I, it, it, I can't have officers changing cars when I need them to get to a crisis. Um, sometimes, sometimes, you know, sometimes civilian clothes certainly could come situations. Sometimes it doesn't give any credibility to the person. Sometimes a uniform alone can help quell a situation from showing up. So I, I, you know, I'd be, I, I don't feel that those recommendations fit or work for police work or police work intended castle.
If, what about the sirens? Is that something that someone might be able to request if it's a mental health thing?
So people certainly can request it, um, but well, if somebody's slit, slit in their wrist, I often needs to get there as soon as are possible. Right? So, you know, so there's, there is to be some discretion as to, to what.
Gotcha. I'm interrupting you, Chief. I apologize.
No, I, 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 I'm glad, Jerry.
You know, my concern with something like that is, is you're getting a call from nine one one. You, you, you're assuming that the person who's calling has, is either sharing the right information, enough information, as Chief said before, you don't know what's going on there. Even if it is a mental health issue, the police have to respond and they have to get there. And especially, you, so you're going to put your sirens on at some point. And especially in our community where we have hills and things like this and children. Can you imagine a police officer responding to a nine one one call whipping through the community because he or she doesn't know what's going on? And there's kids at play and, and there's no one knows he's coming. It's, even I just don't, I just when you think it through, it just doesn't seem practical or realistic.
Some talking about driving through tongue, I was thinking approaching on the scene.
And sometimes the actual lights or siren um, de-escalates a situation because the police are there. So it can have either effect.
Do, do the, does the police officer have discretion?
Yes.
So depending on their knowledge of maybe this family or this situation, they can choose, like, listen, if I go in low, it works better. But that's part of their skill.
Right.
Which is what I think, like, I think testing in the, in the, the repertoire of the police officers is going to really help this. So does that, would that work for you, Hermine? Like, police officers knowing their discretion, knowing what they can do, like, these different things have these different kinds of effects. Think, try to think about that as you approach with that.
I think, um, you know, it would be good ongoing training for them to honor the family's wishes for like, for no sirens. And I do, I have heard and witnessed it myself. Um, when cases when there were requests for no sirens and they showed up with sirens and it further, um, agitated the situation.
I could, I could easily see that too, particularly on an autistic case, because they will get overstimulated by seeing like, I see it, I do, I, I observe that. So, um, if somebody's asking for it, it would be a good idea to listen to them.
The, the point being though, and I think, the point being, I, in my opinion at least, is if we're going to make a recommendation, you have to allow someone to extend discretion of the police because you don't know as a, you may know your family member or you may know, you may not know the person who's having an emergency. How do you, how can you dictate to the police what they should do in that situation when you don't know what's happening yourself? Turn off the siren, turn on the siren, come in plainclothes, don't come in plainclothes. So I, I just think that it just in, in sort of furthering that discretion and making sure, going back to education, that police know how to properly respond, but.
Would you, I mean, but if, but if a nine one one calls is like, so I call and I've got an autistic son and I said, I really need the help, but don't, please don't come with your siren and lights, it'll escalate it. If I take the time to say that. And I would say this, you wouldn't want them to listen to that?
It, it's, it's not a matter of what, whether I want to or not. I think the police officer has to understand the entire, what, everything that's going on. It, it's not the totality of the circumstances. So I would be, I would not want to recommend as, as a recommendation for our local police or up the food chain to the county or the state to say that they have, the police have to honor the wishes of the caller. Because the caller may not be the best person, even if it's sincere, to make that decision. It's, I think so, should still be the discretion of the police officer.
And, and part of it goes back to the, the desk officer ask, asking the right questions, you know, is the person violent or not violent, you know? Um, you know, um, do they have a problem with leaves or lights or whatever? And if that information, you know, so it depends on we, we don't respond to every call with lights and sirens. It's all priority based. So if it's, if it's violent or, or, you know, uh, somebody trying to kill themselves, we'll come with lights and sirens. If it's much lesser extent, then we're going to come, you know, just, just with a normal direct route to the place.
Right, can I just interject for one second?
Alright, sir.
I, I've been on numerous calls of this nature. Um, I probably can count on one hand, maybe two, with two fingers, the amount of times I've responded to a call like that, lights and sirens. Doesn't happen very often. Uh, it's going to be an extreme emergency for that. Just like, like you said, we don't know what's going on before we get to the call, but it's not uh, it's not very often that we're going directly to a call where there's a person that's in some type of mental distress. Where we're going lights and sirens like that. Well, have our lights on. Well, what, what goes on, what's going on, uh, with somebody's, uh, what's going on in somebody's mind like that, but it's not that often. I, I hear a lot of people saying, you know, they go on lights and sirens. We don't normally go that way. We'll go on lights, but not all the time with sirens. Now, if the man that's, uh, dispatch, we have no control over how they respond. We have no control about the response at all. They respond the way they respond. But it's not something that we do very often. It's got to be, you know, something extreme for us to do it that way.
Thank you, Craig. And to his point, the sirens are usually u- used or when they need to try to pass somebody or get through an intersection. And then they're usually turned off.
So I'm just going to digress for a second, but you know, I'm sure everyone all around are having these conversations on mental health. And I think the one thing which is so um, stares at you in your face is what a complex issue the whole mental health challenge is. And, um, one of the things which has come definitely to my mind is how perhaps an unfair situation it is that they should fall onto the police's lap, especially if they're not trained or um, if, for example, like Chief Carroll said, the dispatcher taking, uh, the call isn't trained and is short and curt, um, with the other end of people on the phone. So I hope that, you know, wherever these conversations are being held on mental health. Um, it, it's like, it's, we are trying to attack something which is not the root cause and have it in a police reform group. But, um, I think it's really more complex than how it is. And then when you make a recommendation with, uh, putting into, um, consideration, you know, first of all, you're doing police reform and then with BIPOC people. I think, um, it, it's a hell of a challenge. And what, you know, there's so much we can talk about, but it, it's really not the root cause of um, how we can use police reform with mental health. And that's why I said I was just going to digress. Um, you know, it's nothing of a value which I wanted to add, but it's just so starkingly, um, just like hits you in the face how complex of a situation it is.
And, and, and to your point, and I don't know that I said earlier, we want all the help we can get on these kind of calls.
So, so I think, uh, in terms of, so just to, we can close this, Pete, when I say close it out, I, you know, I'm always cognizant of, of Martha telling me I'm trying to rush things through, always in my head, Martha. Um, but I want to make sure that if we're recommending something, we're changing the language based on what the discussion was before. I, I, what's the language change if any?
Um, I think we want to honor the caller's wish for, based on their knowledge of their kids, their spouse, et cetera, if they request that the police show up on the scene without sirens, that that's honored. I'm not referring to the police having to get through tongue or, you know, but arriving on the scene to the person's home. Um, the, I, I would like for that to recommend that they honor the wish to show up without siren.
And my, my response, just speaking for myself, was I'd rely on, you know, Chief Carroll thinks that's something that can be done, but if it's something that he believes is best to the discretion of the officer, while taking it into consideration, you know, the person, the moment, I would, I would rely on that because I, I would rely on that without knowing, because the police just don't know anymore. So I would feel uncomfortable making that particular suggestion.
Is it, is it okay to just add language on the end of the recommendation to the greatest extent practical?
There you go, Christine. You're being so practical.
Like just, you know, to the greatest extent practical, honor the wish.
Or possible.
You know, the person, and I think that, just like Craig said. You know, we, you, you, nine times, eight times out of ten, he's able to do that. There's two times he can't. And at that point, you just have to trust the judgment of the person who's responding. So if, if people know that the stance is to do that to the greatest extent practical, then they'll be cognizant of doing that every time that they can. And when they can't, you would hope that they really couldn't.
I think that's fair language. I, I would support that type of language. But I'm just me. I don't know if anyone opposes.
Well, I, it's, it's, Hermine, what do you think? Can you live with that?
Sure.
Okay.
All right, so. So what I have is to the greatest extent either possible or practical, to honor the request of the caller, if made, to arrive without lights and or sirens.
Can you live with that, Chief?
Uh, yeah, I mean, and, and I would almost like to the officer, you know, should and must, I'm coming up with, I'm, I'd, um, rely on his experience and, um, in, in making this decision, I, I could come up with some better language for you by tomorrow, but I'd like to say something, you know, history, experience, um, I'll, I'll work on something. Do you see where I'm going with that all?
Yeah.
Okay, well, I think it's probably covered in, to the extent practical. That's an escape, that's an escape clause. For you, Chief.
Okay, I'm going to take and pull these together and then circulate them to the group. We still wanted to, um, try to be able to keep the twenty fifth as our second public hearing. So I wanted to be able to have the group, um, uh, approve the language and then be able to release it um, with the other recommendations. Um, Jeremy, you were going to find out about the, um, uh, the reason, uh, you were going to contact the DA's office.
Yeah.
So how, how are we going to come back around again? Can we do this the twenty fifth? Do we need another meeting?
No, well, give me, I think if you give me till Monday, I could certainly, I don't know if I'll get ahold of someone to speak to and get the answers to that, but.
Well, I just have to be able to, I have to be able to advertise the, the last of the public hearings. So I just want to make sure that we have enough time to get it, you know, to publicize it so that the community can be aware of it, that we circulate the.
I assume we should be able to have that by Thursday or when, keep the last date.
Well, the last date's Thursday, so.
Right, I'm saying keep that last date. Well, well, I'll do my best to get it back.
So you get it back and then, you know, based upon our information, we vote, decide, add it, don't add it? Yeah.
There it is at the beginning. People can make public comment. We can close the public comment. We can discuss it and maybe make a revision real time instead of adding another meeting. Perhaps that's a way of doing it.
If. We could certainly do a lot by email.
Yeah.
As well.
I agree.
Okey dokey.
I, I just have a question. Uh, uh, what about the survey we did? Are any of those results going to be impacted with the decision we make?
The, the survey closes tomorrow and I certainly, I'm not going to have an opportunity to take in. I'll be able to tell you how many people partook. I'll be able to give you.
Did we get, um, any budget to have it read professionally? Do we know how much it costs to be read?
No idea. I don't, I don't know anything about surveys.
But, but I think this was one of the recommendations of the, um, Chief's Advisory Board to review the survey, the results and, you know, go forward with contacting a professional that would help us in budget.
Can, can we get like a budget and then see, you know, go from there?
You know, I, I think before we get a budget, we have to know what we're, how, how, how my budget, how, I say.
I mean, sorry, an estimate, sorry, an estimate, not a budget.
Yeah, I just, um, Christine was, was kind enough to give me a number, a, a number of entities that do surveys. My concern is that they may not take in, analyze a survey that they did not create. So I have to reach out to them.
All right, so you'll, you'll, Jill, you'll look into that. I think that, I think otherwise, I think that was all the comments that we hit from the public in terms of their questions and comments, so we hit the wall. Um, I think, I think we're all set for now.
Right.
No.
Try to get you the stuff, uh, tomorrow.
And reconvene, uh, on Thursday and thank you, everybody. Thank you, everyone. And thanks to the public for their assistance in being involved last week.
Okey dokey. All right, great.
All right, good night, everyone.
Good night. Night of all. Take care.
Christine, thank you for keeping us so, so focused. Thank you.
Oh, no, it's my pleasure. Thank you.
All right, Christine, good night, good night, everyone.